We got it. We got everybody now.
Let's begin. It is 9:06 a.m. on Monday, October 19th. Before we are trying to help Maureen learn Zoom. With that, we have, we're gonna do, I have one update that I just want to make sure the board, since you're here, is aware of. And then from there, our main agenda item is the discussion of the October 5th joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Select Board. So the update that I wanted to give the board is that, and actually, Brian, you might want to chime in on this, is we received notice that the Select Board are meeting with some of our applicants that are in hearings. In their meeting this evening, there is a, which, there is a conflict in this situation. It sounds, Brian, do you wanna?
Yeah, I'll, because it's already changed, it's already changed since we talked last, Heather, so things are always fluid.
Yeah.
So they are not going to be meeting tonight, but just to, I guess, so we had heard that they were going to be meeting on 6:54 specifically for a potential lip, a friendly 40B. And that-
And as the Select Board meeting-
They were going, yes, they were going to meet on Monday, this evening about that. That has since now been changed to sometime on the 26th or later. It's unclear what that was. And Heather and I had obvious concerns, potentially legal concerns, about them meeting with us, or sorry, with them meeting with, with the applicants of 6:54, you know, during a hearing. It just seems to not just undermine the process in general, but like, we just don't understand what's going on. Like, I think in pre-application, I think that, you know, that's more appropriate. And we just wanted to know, like, well, what's happening? And then, and now it looks like there will be further conversations about it, I'm guessing, between Lisa, myself, Heather, and Mike Betancourt. But I don't really know what's going to happen, but Heather, then it's like, well, we might need to start having a conversation about whether or not we require legal counsel. You know, outside of the legal counsel that the town is using. We've obviously done this in the past. We, you know, for specific reasons, some of the Select Boards, I mean, the Select Board is using a land use council right now for the Washington and Swanton. I don't know if everyone knows that, but they've hired Mark Bobowski to do, to deal with the project, the potential project at Washington and Swanton. So the article that's on town meeting, I believe it's Article 13. So that's kind of the whole story.
So I reached out to Lisa on Friday saying we have, I have a concern. We are in a judiciary process and legal counsel, you know, represents the Select Board, but also represents us. There's conflict here. I think we need, the Planning Board needs independent counsel to support us through this process. Prior to knowing this, that they had scheduled this, or that they were talking to people who are in the hearing process, I had asked Brian, and he had sent a memo asking, well, an email, asking for legal counsel to start taking part in our hearings. Going as they get more and more informative and we start, you know, besides just the presentation, when you start going into other portions of the hearings. And so, just so you know, I am looking into that and we'll report back. So that's just really the update of what's going on with that. And I just want to make sure you guys knew, because that was all came in on Friday.
I want to amplify on that, because I've been through this before, sitting on the Planning Board. When the Select Board begins taking initiatives relating to land use projects that the Planning Board also is involved with, there are potential conflicts. In this case, we have a, we're in the middle of a hearing and we naturally, in a hearing, are trying to balance what we hear from the abutters, as well as what we think is in the interest of the town. And in that process, we're trying to negotiate the best outcome. When you do enter into this, the hearing process, and you've got coming in from left field, a proposal with your same proponent from the Select Board to take a whole different approach, that really does make it harder for our Board to do our job as we're trying to basically do the best, get the best outcome possible. So their objective, and it may not be the entire Select Board, but the initiative's been taken by the Select Board, to work with the proponent in a very different direction, really can be what, in conflict with what we're trying to do. The law, the state law, even federal law certainly contemplates that the Planning Boards may need different counsel and that our objectives need different counsel if they're different from the Select Boards. So this has come up in the past, and here we are again. So I think the time has come for us to have our own representation. Oh, and maybe one last clarification. Under state law in Massachusetts, when there's a Select Board that, the executive in the town, it's the Select Board that hires directly the counsel. So the legal counsel right now, Anderson and Krieger, works for the Select Board, not the town manager, not the town collectively, but is under hired by and could be, you know, fired by the contract, everything, the arrangement is with the Select Board. It's not with us. I think that's enough, unless Brian has more to say.
I think, I think we're good. Brian, are you good?
Yeah, I mean, so the only thing now is that, I guess I'm, I instructed to look for land use counsel.
Yep, and I started that process on Friday, Brian, and I will talk to you outside the meeting. And the plan is to, I think, is to get some proposals and bring it back to the Board at some point to review.
Okay, there could be some money issues. I'll, I'll start doing a little digging there.
Yep, yeah, and Lisa, Lisa's aware and recognizes what's, what needs to be done. So we can also talk to Lisa about that as well.
Yeah, but we're not gonna, I don't think, okay.
Okay, so let's move on to, we're fourteen, four minutes behind schedule. So not too bad for the Planning Board. Let's move on to the joint meeting discussion between, from October 5th. And so a couple of members of the Board asked me to add this to our agenda. I wasn't able to add it to last week's agenda. As you know, it was one of our most intense and long meetings. So, but we also didn't want to wait till November to meet to talk about this. And as, none of us have spoken as a Board about this, I think it's really important that we do reconvene as a, as a Planning Board and have a conversation about what happened and as a group and what was going on, that the Planning Board was not, wasn't brought into the conversation on, obviously for open meeting issues regarding, like, we can't have a conversation outside of a meeting. So here we are in our meeting, we can have this conversation now and go from there. I am having the same problem as Maureen, because, oh, here we go. Okay, so what I thought I would do is I'd give you what I have from this, from what happened and how things ended up the way that they did. And then, and then thereafter the meeting, there were some conversations that were had that led to Mary Ellen proceeding. And so from that, I'm just gonna, as you know, and Diab, Diab was CC'd on the emails. The history is, is that Mike reached out and sent an email to Brian. I believe Lisa was on it. Diab, Susan Verdicchio, Vice Chair of the Select Board, and myself, asking for us to use ranked choice voting as the method, and then also questions. The questions, I felt at that time, did not relate to the Planning Board in any way. They were just really, why do you want to volunteer for the town? And so he only had two questions. I asked that one at least include some language regarding what's going on with the Planning Board. So at least we know if they even are following us in any way, or have any idea of what we're up to. And then Brian followed up requesting a change as well regarding conflict of interest, a question being added. And we went to our meeting. Diab and I both said okay to that. And an email. From there, you guys were all part of the meeting. Brian can probably fill you in, if you haven't spoken to him, what happened between how the app was chosen for the voting process. I do not know, actually, how that went through, but I do know that the ranked choice was by the Chair of the Select Board. His intention, from my understanding, was to to do it so that, because he didn't want to hurt anyone's feelings. And from there, Brian came, used the app. He sent us the app late in the day on Monday. It didn't work for most of us, because the Chair of the Select Board went in and used the app prior to the meeting. So a new one, as you guys know, because you were in the meeting, was then sent to the Planning Board members and the Select Board members inside that meeting, to the link to be used. I had not spoken to any of one, I know Diab was on the email, but I hadn't asked Maureen or Heather if you were, if this is, you know, that this process you are okay with. So in the meeting, I specifically said, and I went back and I watched the meeting to make sure that I don't misrepresent what I said. So what I said, these are my exact words, is "From there, we will go into a ranked choice, and Brian will be collecting our choice. And from there, we will go with the person who gets the majority of points." Is everyone comfortable with that, as I have not discussed that with you? And then I looked at all three of you, all of you nodded your heads, because I could see you in the video. And then in response, the Chair of the Select Board said, "And if anything gets screwed up with the ranked choice process, it will be Brian's fault clearly. And I think that we can all agree on that in advance." And also, Brian and I talked about this too. I was saying it jokingly, but if actually, if there's some process, our vote will be our motion at the end of the proof. At the end, to approve that person will be contingent on certifying the ranked choice process was accurate, in case something does go wrong. But because we first started doing it, and it seemed like it involved a lot of math, so, and I think this way, using this feature that Brian circulated, will be helpful. From there, from there, we went, we did the interviews, and at the end, there was problems with the voting, from my perspective, because we had all voted, Jackie hadn't voted. I got results that were different, because Jackie's vote hadn't been come in, then Jackie's vote came in. And then, and then her vote came in. And then there are different screens open on my part. I couldn't see the actual Zoom link. I had something similar happen, which what Maureen had happened at the beginning of this meeting, when Brian turned off his camera. It didn't happen to me just now, but it happened to be there, because I was also inside the app, trying to do the vote, and we look at it and stuff, because they, we had to redo it, because Jackie hadn't voted yet. So I was fumbling with that, but I went and I listened, and Jackie's vote came in, and Brian shared the screen. He didn't share the actually tally of the vote. That wasn't sent to us till after the meeting. But Jackie did say, which I find, this is where I find it really interesting, is that I, she says, "I'm so sorry, what is it?" "Oh, there are nine people there, and did I miss? I am just misunderstanding. I apologize. It is three and three, three, three and three. And Heather, you said it takes the next number. It has points for the second." And then we go on. Diab, you make some great jokes, by the way. I really appreciate them. But Mike then said, he moved to appoint Cheryl, subject to confirmation of the process from the town planner. And then at the very end, Mike did not actually change. Mariano so moved it with Susan Verdicchio seconding it. And at the very end, Mike said, "So Cheryl is appointed, subject to Brian confirming that there is not any funny business, and we will reach out to her." After the meeting, so you guys were all part of that, but that's just a general summary. After that, I did speak to Brian immediately following the meeting and discuss the process of how Cheryl's going to be notified. He did not know. And then thereafter, we hung up. He sent the document with the tallies to us at 7:51 p.m. I just looked at the email this morning for time. He called me at 7:57 p.m., right after that. And he pretty much, and Brian, you know, but the first thing he said is, "There was random elimination embedded in the algorithm." From there, we, I gotta say, Brian, to make that call was not easy on your part, and I really, I have said to Lisa, and that I really truly commend you for making that call and picking it up, for going back and looking at it. From my perspective, it wasn't right for us to put that on you. It wasn't right for us to any of it. And so I just really want to commend you that you picked up the phone and you called me. And so the next thing we did is I notified Lisa, because I knew she was still in the meeting with the Select Board via text, because I knew she could get it that way. And Brian sent an email to, I believe, to Mike and Lisa. And we waited for Mike and Lisa to respond. From there, Mike responded, who is the Chair of the Select Board, that he does not see it as a legal issue. We chose this process before we knew the other candidate had withdrawn, and this is the standard. I think we ended up with one of the top two choices. That is the goal. I would have, as, I would have anticipated that it would have gone back and online members would have reconvened and decided as a nine-person entity, if that, the condition that we placed on our votes, what that meant, and if it needs to come back or not. I personally, there was a lot of, I spoke to Mina as a request by Mina, asking me to come to the conversation. I did not reach out to Legal. And in that conversation, Mina asked if, if we would be willing to reconvene. And I said, absolutely. The Chair of the Select Board said he will not reconvene the meeting. And Mina informed me that I have no ability to reconvene the joint meeting to have all nine members discuss this. And that, from his perspective, there's no legal issue, and that's that. So there-
Heather, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What was the reason that Mike didn't want us to reconvene?
He said it was a political issue.
Well, the, the only thing-
He didn't want, everyone had shown their cards.
That was it, yeah. That was, that was, sorry, yeah. It wasn't just that it was a political issue, it was the, that he was saying that now that everyone shows their cards, that they, they can change, potentially change their votes.
I mean, that's where it hurts to- But that's, that, I, I mean, you'd have to speak to him, but that's his, that's what he said. He also, he said that he knew that there was ranked choice voting, and he was fine with that. He had played with the application prior-
I'm sorry, Heather, you're correct. You said ranked choice voting. You said, I understood, he, you meant random elimination. And that's a really-
Well, he knew that there's random elimination in the ranked choice voting. He knew it.
Just make sure everybody understands. None of us, I did not, and I think we all ought to verify, not a single one of us on the Planning Board knew that random elimination was a possibility in this program.
Maureen, not, sorry, last thing, last thing. Not, not only did, does, did the four of, the four of the Planning Board members told me, obviously, that no one knew that in this specific ranked choice voting, or any other for that matter, but in this one, that there was random, that, I was number five. Jackie was number six, and Susan Verdicchio was number seven. So Jackie, both Jackie and Susan relayed to me that they did not know that's how this was working.
Lisa did not either.
But Lisa's not a voting member either. I mean, neither am I, but I should obviously know.
Steph didn't know either.
Six, the, we have guaranteed six. So that's four Planning Board members and two Select Board members that said they didn't know what was going on.
So just to make sure it's clear, because somebody will be taking the minutes for this meeting, that in the joint meeting, that there was a process with an app. The Chairman, Mike Betancourt, knew that this app included a possibility that if there were a three-way tie, that the computer app would randomly eliminate one of the candidates, even though it was a three-way tie. I've been in multiple meetings where we have had an opening, and I've even seen ties. But we sit together and we discuss further who the candidates are. We make the point about different candidates, different points about different candidates. And ultimately, we work it through as human beings. We do not cede our role in this joint meeting to choose somebody on our Board through, we do not cede it to a computer app. To me, that's just mind-boggling. And then the fact that the Chair of this joint meeting knew that this was a possibility, to me, just defies all, defies everything I can imagine.
And I don't like that we weren't allowed to meet about it, because I felt like I couldn't respond to the emails, and I didn't know that in the background, Legal and the Select Board was making an executive decision, and that someone was being sworn in without any of us having the chance to discuss it. Like, it happened fast behind our backs.
Yeah, good. Just to keep order in this meeting, because I've got a whole bunch of stuff. I'd like to say, could we cycle through people? Just so we're-
Yeah, that, yeah, let's do that. I'm gonna just, I'm gonna wrap up, just because I, I want to apologize to my members of my Board, because, to you guys, because I, I feel that I, I failed in some ways as your Chair. I, when I said points, I, that, I was very clear in using the word points, not votes. Every category, every column has a value to it, and all those have, in ranked choice voting, has value. And and I didn't do my part as a Chair in this situation, and I just, I just feel really bad that that there's nothing I can, I have nothing I can do. And I think all of your votes matter, and whether it's who you rank first, second, or third in your choices, they all have value to them. And I just, I feel really bad. I know, I know Brian also does as well, and I just, the situation is not one that I, I could have foreseen, but at the same time, I just really feel that I didn't do my part. So I'm really sorry on that. And I take full responsibility for that. So we'll go in a circle, and who would like to speak next?
We could do it alphabetically. We started doing that.
Go ahead. Well, then the Chair should have gone last, so go ahead.
I guess it's the other hand.
Well, I already said what my main beef was, which is that I just wanted to discuss as a group and felt like I thought that would happen at a meeting, and then it didn't. And then I was reading the emails and seeing that someone got sworn in, and we didn't have the chance to talk. So I'm not blaming, you know, Heather, you, or Brian. I think the whole thing happened really fast when we were voting in real time. And even when I saw the random elimination, it was happening so fast that I was like, oh, huh, maybe that just like kicked out the person with the least votes, and then moved on to the people with the highest vote. Like, I, I didn't understand. And I feel like it just happened so fast, and to Mina's point, I wish the whole thing could have been slowed down. That's it.
Okay, I'll go next. And first, I want to point out that, again, I, I don't want to issue any blame here. I, I think one of the problems was that Mike asked Brian to come up with something on very short notice. And I think that was very unfair to Brian. And I'm not placing any blame on the Planning Department and Brian, or Heather, I don't blame you. I blame myself, actually, because I've actually written a ranked choice algorithm in the past. And I discovered that it doesn't work well when you have a small number of voters and a small number of candidates. And for some reason, my memory failed me, and I should have said something on Monday. One of the important things is that when you looked at the app, and I was looking at the votes on Monday night as they came in, and I first noticed that Mike Betancourt's votes were incorrect, and I sent him a private chat via Zoom, saying, hey, it looks like you voted, and there's something wrong. And that's when he declared publicly that, we, that's when Brian had to start up a new, a new voting tally. The other thing is that when you looked at that results, it didn't show you how the tie was broken unless you scrolled up. So I saw the results, and I didn't realize there was a random elimination, because in a sense, it was below the fold. So when I, I heard, I did not read the email on Monday night that Brian sent out. I read it Tuesday morning. And that's when I discovered there was random choice. And around 11 o'clock on Tuesday, I sent an email to Lisa, Brian, Mike Betancourt, and Heather. And I essentially said that I just discovered there was random removal. I said, it's not acceptable, and the votes are illegitimate. And in the email, I said, "The Boards were not fully aware of the algorithm used and the consequences of a tie. The algorithm itself is faulty. It should have considered the second level choices as extra information to break the top-level tie. Breaking a tie without looking at all the information available is just wrong." I said, and I don't understand Mike's, Mike's contention that people would change their votes. "We have already voted. We don't need to recast the votes. We just need to use an algorithm which uses all of the information. And until this is done, I will repudiate the results of the voting, not the actual voting itself." I did not get any response from that. I did ask that my concerns be passed along to legal counsel. Later, when I discovered that counsel, they had gone on and sworn in Cheryl, I took a, no, actually, before then, I went and I looked at the actual software, and as part of my job, is I do an awful lot of software development. So I looked at the software, and I noticed that it doesn't really meet standards. In particular, it doesn't actually document anything about the algorithms it uses. There are no tests to verify that the code is doing anything. So you don't know whether the code is doing anything correctly. You don't know what the code is doing. And I looked at some of the issues that people had brought up with the software. And as a matter of fact, the original version of the software did not use random selection. It was added in later at the request of someone else. And again, you know, I've been writing software for 30 years. You have to have tests. You have to have a description of what algorithms you're actually trying to implement. And you need, in the case of voting, you need a third-party verification, validation that what you're doing is actually correct. And so this software doesn't meet any of these specific, any of those things. So my, well, I'll shorten this down to saying, in the email I sent, I said, "We have no idea how the votes were generated on Monday night. There is no verifiable deterministic connection between the votes cast and the results tallied. We need a more thorough legal review of this situation. I'm concerned enough about this. I'm considering whether this should be referred to the State for review." And I say, "On the other hand, we have the actual votes. We can manually apply an appropriate ranked choice algorithm, and several people can independently verify the results." I sent this to Brian, Mike Betancourt, Heather, Lisa, and Art Krieger. Art Krieger bounced, because he was out that week. I got, I finally didn't get a response, so I sent an email out to Mina saying, "Hey, I just heard that the swearing-in had gone ahead. I have all of these outstanding concerns, and no one has responded to me." Mina replied that he'd been in meetings all day. Uh, Mina replied that he'd been in meetings all day and um, in any case, so. We have, we had three really, really strong candidates. I think all of the votes, the voting was so close indicating that all of the boards believed we had strong candidates. I have nothing against. Any of the candidates. My concern is that we did not have a transparent legitimate voting system. And I really am still concerned that anyone could come up and say, hey, this was an illegitimate vote. We are going to find problems with any votes taken by the board. And so that's where I'm at and I'm done. Thank you.
Maureen.
I'm losing it. I think I'm, I'm running through the alphabet. Von Mering comes last and then, okay, so um, my um. I, it's interesting to hear Diab how your response went, uh, maybe though to Beck, uh, but first of all, most of all, I don't blame Heather von Mering. I don't blame Brian, absolutely not. Uh, what happened was uh, in the afternoon, Monday afternoon prior to the meeting. You get this email from, Brian sent it out, saying here's how we're going to do. We're using this app. I emailed Brian. I still have the email, so that's on record, saying I was concerned about it, especially because I was going to have to toggle between Zoom. And the app. And as you guys are all hearing, I'm actually doing fine again today. Most of the time I do fine, but the toggling uh, does definitely concern me. So I um, wrote and Brian said it, it's, it should be fine. Um, I don't know, it was some short answer, but I was already concerned. So then um, I'm in the meeting and I've got my laptop going and my iPad as a backup, so I can make sure I don't lose it. And then lo and behold, I learned that the chair has um, already been messing around and so the link was invalidated. Then um, Brian, uh, I asked for somebody to send a new link. This is during the meeting all the way, you know, it was almost the hour into it. And then um, Brian sent, what do you call that, Brian? The, it's the address basically, uh, but it wasn't the link. So I'm trying to mess around, get, getting that thing copied and pasted to go back into the app. And I was having a Dickens of a time, but anyway, uh, I was cer, I, uh, by that point, I totally lost the Zoom screen. But I had the audio. So if anybody says, oh, you could see it on your screen, I couldn't see it on my screen, but I'm now hearing it didn't matter. Because anybody else wasn't seeing the results on the screen because first of all, it was um. There was a relay elapsed between what ultimately got recorded by the uh, uh, what, our cable um, people. And what we were seeing on our screens. So there was that. But so afterwards, all I knew was we had a three, three, three. I do remember Jackie Belt saying, what happens now? And then it goes to the next vote. But in fact, that's what I would have assumed. And so the app announced the winner and that was the end. The next day, uh, morning, then I find out lo and behold, it wasn't actually oper, or the vote wasn't happening the way I thought it would. And that after the three, three, three vote, in fact, there, the next round, second round, or second choices for everybody would have. Uh, uh, and would have uh, resulted in Sally Dale winning because she got more votes on the second round. As num, um, or second, whatever, ranking at second choice. So in the end, it just all seemed bollixed up, but random elimination was something I hadn't anticipated. So I did something a little different from the rest of you. I went back to Mass General Law. And I looked at what happens when there's an opening on the planning board. And it describes how there'll be this joint meeting with the select board and the elected board. If it's for, it's for, by the way, for an elected board. It's very specific. And I went back in and it describes this, how the new member will be chosen within this joint meeting. It doesn't assume that a random elimination will take place, that a computer app will make the selection. So I feel as if the, the law has not been followed in that uh, this uh, unbeknownst to us. By using this app, the real people ceded their ability to choose the open, um, the member for the open seat. That we ceded that to a computer app. Well, I didn't actively cede that, nor did anybody else. Um, except then later, and this is like a week into it, I learned the chair of the select board who chaired the meeting. Knew that there could be random elimination. So that's even more um, concerning. So we've got two issues really. One is that the members, the real life human beings. Um, uh, ultimately, if you looked at all the votes, uh, would have chosen Sally Dale. And so it was only through a computer app that this happened. And then my second real just, wha- what? Um, what's really upsetting is to know that the chair knew that this was a possibility and one would. Wonder, question, did the chair know how the outcome of the voting took place? And chose to push through for the final vote without the, everybody else understanding what was going on. Um, also, I'm concerned about the um, uh, the way council, of course, as I said earlier on another matter. The council works for the select board and specifically under the chair of the select board. So there's another uh, question that I think about how we're now advised that the, we can't. Uh, we can't call a joint meeting. And so here we are on, in this um, situation. But we certainly can declare what we, what transpired and um, our, our um, our, our concerns about how this process is unfolding. And as a final um, comment, uh, I just have been so concerned about a national election. A general, a general sense of values that I have or a general, a broader value that I have of every vote counting. And this isn't what's happened in our board. And that's my biggest um, what outrage. So that's it for me, outrage. Thank you. And again, like Diab said, it's not about the people. It's about the votes must count. That's it.
Um, Heather, do you mind if I speak for a minute?
Go ahead, Brian.
Um, so, thank you for, I guess you're standing beside or with me. I guess throughout all this, but um, you know, um, I was asked to do a job. It didn't work out. Um, but we're all responding that, responding to that. And then I, I appreciate again your standing with. Um, now on to some more boring things related to this. Um, so we need to respond to an open meeting law complaint. Um, filed on uh, October eighth. And basically need to determine if we want town council to be authorized to submit a response. Um, or whether we're gonna do it ourselves. Do you have, I'm gonna mute you for a second, I think. Yeah, sorry, Diab had to mute you. There was a lot of feedback. Um, so we, we, um, so this is obviously related to that meeting. Um, but the thing is there's some filing deadlines and we basically need to determine whether or not we want to um, have Mina handle this. Um, or whether, we, we're certainly not gonna have any time to like hire anybody to, to, you know, it's basically either us or, uh, you know. All we, all we're doing here is giving all of our information to legal um, and having them respond. So that's something we need to decide, like now, like today, like.
So, um, so going through that issue, um, prior to anything being filed, I had. Due to everything going on and um, actually how I have the language that was used in the meeting, I went back and watched the whole meeting. Um, and when I did, I picked up concerns on my part regarding open meeting issues. Um, and I reached out to Mary Ellen noting that I had concerns and asked her for um, direction on how to proceed to address it. And um. Um, she didn't respond. Um, she never responded and um, I came to find out that everything's been turned over to Mina. So I forwarded um, my email that I sent to Mary Ellen to Mina. Um, and he did not provide me any guidance how to rectify my concerns um, or anything. But then Brian sent me um, a forward of emails. Um, saying that Mina would like to, would um, would, it's not recommend or anything, that just that. It, Mina needs to be directed to respond to the um. The open meeting complaint filing. Um. I, it's. It, it sounds like it's more defend um, versus address. Um, and that's where my concern is because. Um, I mean, I think the, the members of the planning board know me and know me well enough that if there's a problem and it needs to be addressed, I take it on. And I will deal with it and I will do what's right to fix it. Um, and if there is in fact issues, I want to take it on. And address it and fix it. Um, so if that means um. However, but in the past, what has happened is we go to Mary Ellen. Mary Ellen tells us the procedures we need to take to correct it if they are. In fact, valid and then we go and do it. Um, this, this doesn't feel like that to me right now. And so that's why I'm struggling um, as a board if we choose to vote with majority. Um, um, giving Mina authority to respond.
So, so just, so just so we're clear, the only reason Mary Ellen can't do this is because her office is flat out for the next ever. Uh, related to voting and town meeting. So usually Mary, so Mary Ellen gave this to legal because she, she doesn't have the time. But the thing is, no matter what, we still, like you said, we still need to respond to this open meeting law complaint, uh, like legally. We have, we have to respond to it. I've, so what I've done is I've gotten all of mine, Heather's and Diab's um, emails.
Um, that's FOIA.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, uh, no, it's all the same though. It's the same information.
No, the open meeting law is different than the FOIA. The Freedom of Information Act is turning over all of our communication we have, which I. Um.
Yes, but we still need to turn over all information for both, for both of those.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. So, so right now I only have Heather's and Heather von Marings and Diab's. I do not have any communication. Um, it was based on email last week from either hand. And if you didn't have any, that's fine, but um, Maureen, I do know.
It's Maureen. I sent you a few emails.
Okay.
Oh, Maureen, are you saying that when you sent emails, you always CC'd Brian on them or that you sent him ones that he needed to include? Can you clarify?
He needed to add, okay. But certainly most things Brian gets CC'd on anyway.
Right.
Can someone please list what the open meeting law concerns were for the record? Because.
Um, I can pull up, um.
John Steven, John Stevens is here, if you want to ask him.
Yeah, no, he filed, he filed a FOIA.
Oh, he did the FOIA? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's missed, it's Sally Dale who's also here.
Right, but I think we should, the board should describe what it received rather than.
If you give me a minute, I will pull up and list it for you. I think it'd be better than opening it up to anyone. Um, that's going with the information we have. Um. And go from there.
So it, I kind of, either way, we still need to decide whether we're just gonna do this, you know, me and the planning board. Uh, and um, or are we just essentially, like I said, giving information over? And um, letting legal do the actual legal response.
So it's more. Legal has been dealing the FOIA. It's actually the open meeting that we need to decide on.
So to my mind, again, I don't blame anybody. I feel like the, in terms of the meeting. That was the joint meeting, that it was the determination of the chair. I don't feel I was in a position. To, I guess, I don't know, if legally, if I'm guilty, I'm guilty, but I feel as if it was wrong to send the candidates out of the meeting completely. I think they should have been muted and that's it. So that's my personal view, but I don't see that there was any place or any way. Uh, as I said before, I was having trouble enough this, with this remote meeting. So I wasn't in a position to say, hey, why are you sending them in and out of the meeting?
Well.
Yeah, I thought that was weird. When I interviewed, we weren't sent out of the room. We were sitting there waiting.
Right. Always has been that way. That's how appointments are made. There's nothing, this is not executive session. In fact, executive session was proposed by the chairman of that meeting. And I raised that question. Uh, Brian, you remember that. You're my witness on that one. And we determined our, our Krieger responded. And said, can't be executive session.
Correct. With ju- ju- super quick. So Heather, I just want to make sure that this is clear. So Mina had ge, had sent me an email specific about this. Open meeting law complaint and that we definitely need to either delegate the legal, legal response, legal uh, council to respond to this complaint. Or we need to respond ourselves. So this is not the FOIA. This is talking about the.
I, I think we should respond ourselves because otherwise.
Okay, because that, that, that's an important distinction that I need, that I need, that I need. Um, and then the other thing is if there's any communication between, between uh, planning board members. So I know, like you said, Maureen, you, you sent some emails to me and the chair and then to legal, but if there was anything else, the between, you need to send that. Um, e- everybody need to send it to me as soon as possible.
I sent those to you al- almost last week.
Yeah, I was, yeah, probably, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that like, again, we just, we have everything. That's all.
I think I only sent one email to you, Brian, and it wasn't about open meeting. It was about the counting.
Well, no, um, if it's related to that meeting, that's what the, that's what the open meeting law complaint is about. So any, any emails that are related to that October fifth meeting. So that would be one of them.
Okay, your email said that you had everything that was sent to you already. So do you want me to? But then now you said you don't have it.
No, no, sorry. Um, sorry. If, if I was copied, I have it. I wanted to make sure if there's anything that you sent between, between members or to legal without me. So.
And I did send you me, uh, some me, emails.
Right, got that. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm done. I'm sorry, that took so long. God, thank you.
Yeah, this is um, the description of the alleged violation. Um, this is different than what I was concerned with. That I sent to Mary Ellen, but this is what um, the filing is. I attended a portion of the October fifth, twenty twenty, six P M joint meeting of the Winchester Massachusetts Select Board and Planning Board. Convened to interview three candidates for appointment to an interim position of, on the planning board. As one of the three candidates interviewed, I was admitted into the Zoom meeting approximately six and a half minutes into the meeting. Was asked to leave the meeting approximately seventeen minutes into the meeting when my interview was concluded. The select board chair was leading the meeting. It was he who let me in and asked me to leave. I reviewed on October sixth, twenty twenty, the Winchester Community Access and Media, WinCam, video recording of this meeting. I learned that, I learned from that viewing that if I had been permitted to remain in the meeting, I would have been able to object to the voting procedures at the end of the meeting. I believe because of those proceedings that I have been unjustly denied appointment to this interim position on the planning board. I believe that my, being asked to leave the meeting after my interview, which I present to you on this form as a violation of the open meeting law. Resulted in me being unjustly not appointed to the position. At this time, I have no substantial believe, reason to believe the violation was intentional. And then to rectify it, um. Um, that what, what, so this is where we have some issues, but what action do you want the public body to take in response to your complaint? One is to, I want the select board and planning board to reconvene and reconsider the ranked choice voting results of the October fifth joint meeting. In which I won the majority of first and second choice votes, but which results on page through the result document show my name is being random, randomly eliminated. Without the knowledge of the meeting attendees at the time of meeting. Two, I would like the town of Winchester to officially adopt a measure that prohibits random elimination of candidates. When public votes are conducted using any ranked choice voting software. So we as a board cannot do one or two. Um, I, we have tried to recon, reconvene. This chair, the select board will not reconvene. So it also, it's not directed, um, the, it is directed, um. To a specific person and not to the board. Um, did it mean a saying that email that we don't have to because it's not directed to us?
Um, the way Mina described it in his email was that we are named in the complaint as well and therefore need to respond.
Okay.
So I think we can respond to the first point in the sense that we could say that this board um, feels. That the remedy requested in point number one is appropriate. That's all we can say. Uh, and number two, that is something beyond, I don't know, that's a townwide thing. I mean, we could certainly as a board say that we won't, we will not use random elimination. But number two seems to be town hall wide.
It is town hall wide, but you know, we could, um.
We can say we support it.
We can say we, we can take a vote and, and that will be our policy and we'll put into our policies.
No, I agree. I just, you know, there's, there's a specific thing that we can do. We just can't address the whole thing. So.
So maybe, um, maybe, uh, Diab, would you be, as the vice chair, would you be able to take this on going forward and?
Sure, just, I just.
I think also it doesn't, I don't, I don't think it helps um, right now with, um. Which is really unfortunate is I feel that um, I can't do what I think is right. And the ethical thing to do, because every time I take it, it comes back to my votes. I have said that all three candidates. Were qualified and all three belong and would do an excellent job on our board. But at the end of the day, it's, it's what is the right thing to do and all voices, all nine voting members have voices. They matter and that is where I fall in it, but I keep getting it kicked back in my face. Well, look at how you voted. So I need to be removed out of this equation completely. And I would like you to take it on.
Works for me.
Okay.
Cause uh, my, my, my votes are public and um, the person I voted for ended up being the third choice. So I have no. Problems taking that on. I just would need a vote from the board directing me as to how we should reply to the two. Do we just need to reply to the remedies? Do we say, yes, we agree there was a problem? And we agree with the remedies as far as we can implement them? Or do we need, I mean, that's, that's the three things that we have to vote. Yes, we believe there's a problem. Yes, we agree with remedy one and yes, we agree with remedy two.
Yes, and that we can't do remedy two, but as a board, um, we will add it into our policies and procedures of our board.
Right.
We can add it into all of our. What document would that go in, Brian? Or do we need to create one?
I think we need to create one.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
And, and I, I'm really, what really concerns me about this is it casts a pall on this concept of rank choice. Which I think, and I, and I, I really believe rank choice is a better way of doing things. Um, but I, I think this is so unfortunate that. But any case, um, so give me a vote and I will, I will act on it.
Just super quick, I, it would not be a new document. It would be in the, for our hearings or uh. Or any of those documents that already exist for the rules and regulations associated with hearings for special permits and all these other things. It would be. There in terms of how we vote, because we talk about the three, the, the multiple different ways we can vote in terms of, you know. Favorable, unfavorable with conditions, without conditions. That's where we would put the voting.
Okay, I was thinking this would only apply to applicants. So the question to the board then is, do we want to have a uniform voting system on proposals? Before the board and applicants, or do we want them separate? Because.
I mean, the only reason I'm saying is because we can't force the, that's kind of the problem we're in right now. We can't force the Select Board to. Like, I don't know what rules and regulations in terms of the app, the only type of things that we have for appointments related to. For the planning board is the Select Board. What you're talking about other appointments like design review and other, just normal appointments?
I don't know. I'm just realizing that it does seem that when we vote on um, proposals. Before the board as, you know, when we're, when there are special permits or those things, that, that we could consider those. Those are voting on.
Yeah, there's no ranking. There's no ranking.
No ranking. So what, what we do vote on where there's multiple candidates would be like people we hire. You know, things like that. So it seems like there's a separate category of voting.
Well, yeah, I think for now, we're supposed.
Just a statement. Yeah, I think we put out a statement instead.
Well, I'm going to say, um, Mina observed that, and so did the developer of this computer app. But I mean, I think it's widely accepted for, when there are fewer people or ideas or whatever you're contemplating, Diab. Uh, in smaller scale with a small group such as we are, it's really the small size of our group. Um, as well as various options, but that we have the ability to talk through or work through what we are trying to do. And Lord knows that's worked for centuries. I really think that ceding any of this to a computer app is a mistake. I think usually dialogue is the best way to get to your vote.
Oh, I agree. And it's, it's not, it's, we don't even need an app technically. I mean, it's just a simple sort of. We, we, we have a, a decision tree based on how many votes are cast. So um.
Reason you have these decision trees, and I will be voting soon, and I will be voting for ranked choice voting. But when you're looking at the seat vacated by um, young Mr. Kennedy. And you're looking at thousands of votes being cast, then the idea of reconvening is uh, and having a second round of voting. Meaning in other words, a runoff is a very expensive process. And if that was in a democratic prime, it was in a primary for Democratic Party. It's not, it's not, it's expensive. It's not going to happen. So. That work, or that's a good solution for large, uh, when you've got a large number of voters. But we've got a very small number of voters at our table. And I think the whole concept of still talking through, working through any um, decision. Is the most desirable and beneficial.
No, I, I, I agree.
So we made it through our master plan housing, um, our master plan steering committee, which was a large group of people without using ranked choice. Does a planning board even need to use ranked choice for any of our work?
No.
So.
Yeah, I would say we probably, I mean.
I, I, I understand the chair of this life board's concern to hurt people's feelings. But I think what just happened hurts everyone's feelings. So.
It was more than hurt feelings. It was illegitimate. It was, there's a basic premise.
I think at this point, we can talk about it in more depth, but that we can, as a board, we can take a position that we will, we will, as a board, we will not use. Um, any um, way to measure um, our votes using random, using any form. That has random elimination of a candidate.
Yeah, I think we can just settle on.
For that, and we can go back as a board and really decide how, if we want to ever use ranked choice or not, and if we want to include that in that, but.
Yeah, because if we ever wanted to use it, we could write up the rules in advance and have, you know, an Excel spreadsheet ready or something.
Right, well, at the very least, it can be done with real, just tallies. Not complicated math. DM's good, but I could do this one myself.
It's just unfortunate we couldn't do it in the three minutes.
Well, it was, I didn't even have it.
You know, it's. It would have been, um, you know, I don't have anything against web apps if they're, if we know what's going on with them. But certainly as Maureen pointed out, the user experience was not this, you know. We can't do it remotely when we have people who fall in and out of Zoom meetings and it's just. Yeah. So I think, I think if, if the board would choose, would, would vote. I can go forward with the, with um, responding to the open meeting law. I will work with Brian. Um, and draft something. Brian, what is our deadline?
Um, I, we have fourteen days from. So it was filed. I believe last week. So we have about a week. So it's, it's really. Over the next three days. If possible. If not.
Sure. I mean, is there, is there time to, to bring this document back to the board or should we?
No, that's why, that's exactly why this vote is.
Okay, okay. So, so the board will.
My mind, the big question is whether to say that um, we. Uh, we really didn't, as members sitting in that meeting, didn't have an opportunity to even question. Cause I did, I mean, I did in my mind. I thought, what's going on here? Because we, I'd already personally, me, Maureen, had already raised the idea that. What had already said, this can't be executive session. And that went to An- uh, Anderson and Krieger and Art wrote back and said, yeah, no executive session. So I'm sitting in the meeting and there we are. And, and it was, in essence, it was executive session. The members were. Uh, thrown out of the meeting, which should have been a public meeting. So I don't know how much to say.
I, I, so that, that was raised. Uh, and just before we go on a huge tangent on that is that it's still their contention. Meaning legal councils was like, well, it's still open, meaning that it was still available, yet no, you wouldn't have been able to potentially um. Been able to speak, but I mean, it was on, I'm not saying I agree with this just before anyone jumps in here, but um. That legal counsel was saying is like, it technically was not executive session. It was clearly open. It was on, it was live on Wind Cam. So it was definitely an open meeting.
Right, I mean.
I don't necessarily agree with that. I'm just saying that they're, they're like, there's no, they said, there's no doubt. It's open. It was, it was definitely.
If you were a person coming, see, obviously again, council is now in the mode, and this is a really important point. Council is now in the mode of defending the meeting.
Yes.
So let's make that clear. Now, I would respond and say as somebody who didn't like what I saw. That if I had been a candidate, I would have presumed that I'm supposed to leave the meeting, like this is supposed to be quiet. And I, frankly, it wouldn't have occurred to me to then go turn on whatever, a TV or start streaming Wind Cam. Especially because I'm already waiting and wondering if I'm going to be called back into the meeting. So I, I just don't even buy that. But that's.
I'm, yeah, I'm just saying what they're saying.
File away, because this could be um, a matter back and forth.
Well, when the, the candidates were sitting in a waiting room when the chair, right, they were in a waiting room, waiting to get into the meeting. When the chair announced that it was an open meeting. And being broadcasted. They weren't allowed in the room to hear him say that. Right? They weren't allowed in the meeting. They're held in a waiting room. So. There, there's no way they would have known that it was being broadcast or anything, because they were sitting in a waiting room, waiting to get into the meeting. So.
That's, you're, you're speaking like a person and you're not speaking. That's the problem, Heather, is that.
When it's, I mean, if it, that actually were um, elevated and going into the Attorney General's Office for review. There's a certain absurdity to pushing people back into the waiting room, so they can't be part of your meeting.
I think, I think that in our response, we can simply state. That we agree with the gist of the. Argument, or the, 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 the argument for the violation, whether or not it's technically an open meeting law violation. It's not up to us to decide, but we certainly feel that the person's complaint. Is a valid complaint in terms of their ability to participate. And.
You're making it more, you don't have a chance to write. Um, so you'll get this later when you're, it's quiet. But realistically, if somebody's been pushed back into the waiting room, they're kind of tied to their laptop or whatever they're using. To just stay in the meeting. Uh, as I said, it wasn't even clear if they would be coming back. So like to congratulate and announce who was the winner or something. That might, I wasn't sure where this meeting was going. So there was, there was a lot of, um, I think funny stuff going on.
Okay, um, so I know Heather Hannon needs to go really desperately to work as do I and as all, all of us work. So. Um, Heather. We, there is a motion. Diab, do you want to take it? I'm not going and.
Well, you can, you can call for the motion to be made. I can't see it because it's being obscured. Thank you.
We're gonna have this, um, so there's a motion. Um, can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay, um, do we need to define what we're, how we're responding or just delegate the vice chair to respond? I think we discussed it, that I, I support the vice chair, however. He may choose to proceed. Um, he has a general idea of how the full board, and I feel he can represent that appropriately in this thing. So I don't know if we have to define how he responds.
Yeah, agree.
Okay, um, I, did someone want to make a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
The motion is for the vice chair to respond for the board to the open meeting law complaint filed by Sally Dale. On October eighth, twenty twenty. Motion was by um, Hannon with, oh no, it's Meister, right? Uh, motion was made by Hannon, seconded by Meister. All those in favor, alphabetic order, please.
Hannon, I.
Jury, a sigh.
Meister, I.
Von Maring, I. Motion passes four O.
Is, is, is Cheryl still on board with this?
She's, she, she had to leave at nine thirty-five.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So she, she was on till nine thirty-five. Yep.
Okay.
Um, and then with that, um, the other question before we adjourn, um, is Brian, do we have any money in um, our. Um, professional fees in case um, you want a little independent legal to review this, Diab?
I, I don't. Short answer is probably not.
I don't know that we need.
We don't need, we don't need legal fund for them to review it. I don't know what.
Okay.
No, no.
If we wanted legal, I, I think the town can review it in terms, I mean, the key thing is, are we protecting the town by saying this? Are we putting the town in danger by saying this? Whatever I put in the memo. And I would trust that Krieger at all would be sufficient for that.
Yes.
Cause they are.
See what comes back, because I'm not sure.
We, Heather and Diab and I will, will do this.
No, I, I need to be removed from it.
DM and I, well, we, I think Diab and I understand the concerns. And, and we can relay the information.
Yeah.
And.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, um, I don't. Sorry that, yeah, I needed, we needed to get through that. I didn't have anything else at this very.
Um, no, but I would like, Brian, as part of this meeting, um, please don't respond, but I would like as part of this meeting for you to forward. Mina's email to me to the full board. And said, and everyone, um.
The one where he said that the board should respond to the open meeting law request?
Uh, no, the one in response to my email to Mary Ellen, so that um. They have a better understanding of Mina's position.
Okay.
I'm also, art is not readily available easily, which is also making it difficult. Because I feel like um, arts has a different style that and. Is just more clarity in the process that we are, I am not getting. I was not getting during, through this. And so, um, I would like, uh, Diab, you to have all the communication I've had from Mina and take it away.
And. Okay, that's cool.
Report back to the board, um.
Yeah, um, I did prepare a couple of motions for the last meeting. I realized we're getting really short on time. Um, and one of the motions was to declare the vote illegitimate. And the other one was to. Request the Select Board and the Planning Board have another joint meeting.
Oh, I would support both of those.
So Brian, can you pop those up? I sent you an email on those. It's kind of long because it provides some context.
Yeah, hold on. Uh, I haven't gotten anything for, you said you just sent it?
No, no, I sent it for our last meeting, because I thought there would be time. So check your email from last.
Oh, no, no, yeah, I had that. I'm saying, you want me to put that up?
Yeah, could you do that, please?
Yep. It was Friday, I believe.
No, well, when did we have our last meeting? Was it?
The thirteenth.
Oh, that was a Tuesday.
Yes.
Yeah, so it would have been that Tuesday.
Uh, yeah, I don't.
It's on the third, yeah. Motions for this evening is the name of the email.
Okay, got it.
Or, or you can ask, you can let me.
Should be up there.
Yep.
Hold on a second. Okay, I'm good. Maureen, can you read that? It's pretty small.
Okay, hang on. Uh, yeah, I'm looking for the top of one. Yeah, there, I didn't get one. Oh, there's more. I'm seeing it cut off at the top.
Yeah, it's a long one.
I mean, this is, yeah, I mean, um, sorry, I don't.
Yeah.
Alright, so the first one's basically is calling for the, the, to revisit and why. And while the, it's, I, I guess I didn't understand the two. It looks like that there's, that both motions are still saying that we need to reconvene.
Right, the first one says, we, this is, we need to reconvene. The second one authorizes the chair. Right, the first one says, we, this is, we need to reconvene, the second one authorizes the chair to ask to tell, tell the Select Board that we need to reconvene.
Right, and but we, we've done that, we've done that, but.
Well, we've done it to the chair, we have not done it to the full Select Board.
This is to the full Select Board.
I think this is good.
Okay. I guess you can vote this email in from ten thirteen.
I think you should change motion two to President Planning Board Vice Chair to inform the Select Board.
Okay.
I knew, I really think it, in this position, it's best that I.
Understood.
Right, take the political out of it and just concern.
Okay. Oh, you want to cut and paste, the other one is a mess to cut and paste, so if we want to vote on the first one.
It was better, because it, oh, okay, yeah, because you want everything.
Yeah, yeah, so motion number one is simply to declare how we feel about it. Excuse me. So I'll move number one, is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Heather Hannah, did you have a chance to read that?
Um, I was just skimming it.
Do you need more time, or are you okay?
Um, I think I get the gist of it.
Okay.
Oh, just an edit here, can you, in particular, the process, number one, use the method of, just not, no, it should be explicit, number one.
Yeah, I know.
No, Deab's number one. I'm sorry.
Where it says, in particular, the process.
Yeah, use the method, use the method of tile, I would, instead of tile elimination, just put random elimination.
Well.
Oh, 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 hang on, method of tile elimination, that was ran, that was random.
Right. Were that included, yeah, excuse me.
Yeah, that'll do it. That'll do it.
Add that as well, the two Select Board members told me as well, but I don't know if it's means, if we care to do it.
I, I don't think we should speak on this.
Okay.
I don't know how you know, but.
Anyway.
I think we should just stick to the planning board.
Sure, all right, well, then these are, so, so you can just do both.
So I move number one.
A second. Meister, aye.
Jurious, aye, yeah, sorry, I have something in my, something in my throat, excuse me.
All right, motion passed. Four oh one with Wolf absent. Motion number two.
Yeah, that's good.
Uh, does someone want to make the motion?
Uh, make, I move this, whatever, number five, motion two.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hannah, aye.
Jurious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Bon Maring, aye. Motion passes four oh one with Wolf absent. Um, thank you, Deab, for taking leadership on as we go forward, and Brian will forward the emails from council for everyone, please don't respond to it in any form of emails, we don't, we, so everyone knows, as a board, we don't communicate or discuss things outside of our meetings, which is why we actually had to call this meeting, so thank you, everyone, for your time, Heather, thank you for squeezing this in your workday, and everyone else as well.
And thanks to you, Heather.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'm going to be thanking Deab from here on forward.
Well, I move, I, I move, we move.
Yes, do we have an emergency adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, so we have a first by Hannah, a second by Deab. Meeting is adjourned at twelve twenty-one A M. Thank you, and we, I will see you and talk to you guys in November.
Ten twenty A M.
Ten twenty, please.
Ten twenty A M.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good night, everyone.